Good evening, everyone. We are ready to begin the Planning Commission meeting, and it is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We are live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Moody.
Here.
Vice Chair Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Flengus.
Here.
Commissioner Probridge.
Here.
Commissioner Creer.
Here.
Commissioner Cherry.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available to help. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so that we can have a smooth meeting. Moving to item number four, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as any amount of time, any single speaker allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific actions will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Good evening.
Good evening. Arnold Scott, 840 South Rancho Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 891-06. Item number 27, I'd like to request that be put in abeyance. The care center located 200 north of Foremaster Lane, we have been busy renovating it and getting a lot of volunteers and corporations involved in renovating the facility, and we were, we got a notice of violation, a first correction notice, on February 2nd. The reinspection is scheduled for February 16th. Then we got a second notice, which was revised because we did some of the...
Mr. Scott, can I just cut you off? I'm sorry to do that.
Please, go ahead, please.
I'm going to ask you to come back to the podium during housekeeping, since we're going to handle all of the abeyance items during that portion of the agenda.
Of course.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Greg Wild. I'm here for items 57 and 58. I don't know if you want to finish the roll call yet on those matters before I give my speech.
Are you here to speak specifically on those items?
Yes, uh-huh.
Then I'm going to ask you to come to the podium when those items are called.
So I, I thought, okay, so I have to wait until, even though it's 57 and 58?
Um...
Mr. Chairman, is he asking them to be obeyed or held or something, or does he actually want the item heard tonight?
You're here to speak in favor or in opposition to those two items?
In opposition to it.
Yeah, we'll ask you to come back up once those items are called.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brandon Wild. I'm with my father to speak in opposition for that 57, 58 as well.
So anyone here to speak on any specific item, other than an abeyance or table and request, we'd, we'd love to hear from you once those items are called. So we're now going to move on to item five. This is for possible action to approve the final minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of January 12, 2016. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Before you make the motion, I'll be abstaining on that because I wasn't present at the meeting.
Thanks, Commissioner Flengus.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the January 12, 2016 Planning Commission hearing.
Okay, please vote. That motion carries. Those meetings are, those minutes are approved. We are now to our housekeeping items under number six. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, or applicants, or members of the public, Mr. Scott, would like to pull forward for action? Come on up, and we'll hear from staff while you're, while you're approaching.
Mr. Chairman, staff has received the following abeyance requests. Items 19 and 20, VAR 61777 and VAC 61552. The applicant has requested that these items be held in abeyance until the April 12 Planning Commission meeting, so that they can continue to resolve issues with surrounding property owners. Items 21 through 26, ZON 62349, VAR 62351, VAR 62352, WVR 62529, VAC 62354, and TMP 62355. The applicant has requested these items be held in abeyance until the March 8 Planning Commission meeting, so that they can have a voluntary neighborhood meeting. Item 28, SDR 62361, the applicant has requested abeyance until the March 8 Planning Commission meeting, so they can work out issues with the water district. And the last abeyance request from staff is for items 29 and 30, ROC 62359, VAR 62360. The applicant has requested that these items be held in abeyance until March 8, so that they can resolve issues related to the Cul-de-sac. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Mr. Scott.
Good evening, Commissioner. Item, requesting item number 27 be put in abeyance to give us enough time to continue to work with a general contractor that we have on the project right now, and conform to all of the items, construction items, which we think are minor but very repairable. And then we will apply for, we've applied for a business license, and then we will apply for the certificate of occupancy.
Okay, very good. Do any members of the public wish to speak on any of the items that have been requested to be obeyed? Seeing none, Commissioner Schlotman, your motion on those housekeeping items?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask through you, question for the applicant for item number 27, would that be holding the item in abeyance till April 12 or March 8?
March 8 would be great, if we could.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Chairman, I would make a motion to hold items 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30 until the March 8, 2016 Planning Commission hearing, and to hold items 19 and 20 in abeyance till the April 12, 2016 Planning Commission hearing.
All right, and you did say item 27 until March 8?
Yes, that would include 27 until March 8.
Okay, very good. A motion is made, please vote. Motion carries. Those items are obeyed.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We're now to the consent item portion of the agenda. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commissioner, member, or applicant so desires. And just to the public, it's not required that these items be read into the record. So before I ask for a motion, I do want to note that with regard to item seven, the applicant is Desert Jim Cats. I have had a previous legal relationship with some of the principal owners. That relationship is three or four years old. I do not have an ongoing relationship, and so I don't see any reason to, to not vote on this. So I will be voting. Commissioner Schlotman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on items number seven and eight, I would move to approve.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, items seven and eight are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk within seven days.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the one motion, one vote. The following items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine non-public and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission, not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff, should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item nine, 6266, SUP 62667, the applicant is Hollywood Bail Bonds LLC, and the owner is Gemini Series LLC I, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed bail bond service at 1819 East Charleston Boulevard, Suite 102 in Ward III. Staff recommends approval. Item number 10, SUP 62746, the applicant is the Iron Yard, and the owner is Neecal Associates LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 5,372 square foot college, university, or seminary at 1112 South Casino Center Boulevard in Ward III. Staff recommends approval. Item 11 is SUP 62788. The applicant is King Hippos, and the owner is Arts District Holdings LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a 2,562 square foot urban lounge with 1,040 square feet of outdoor seating area at 1018 South Main Street in Ward III. Staff recommends approval. Item 12 is SUP 62790. The applicant is Huntsman. The owner is Arts District Holdings LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a 2,649 square foot tavern limited establishment use with 934 square feet of outdoor seating area at 1018 South Main Street in Ward III. Staff recommends approval. Item 13 is SUP 62797. This is a special use permit. The applicant is Rebar. The owner is Main Street Las Vegas LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a 1,775 square foot tavern limited establishment use with 754 square feet of outdoor seating area at 1225 South Main Street in Ward III. Staff recommends approval. Item 14 is VAR 62789. The applicant owner is University Medical Center of Southern Nevada, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a primary street name to be used more than once and on a different alignment than an existing street, and to allow the suffix place to be used on a north-south oriented street where place represents a generally northwest-southeast oriented street on the south side of Gold Ring Avenue, west of Willow Street in Ward I. Staff recommends approval. Item 15 is SDR 62716. The applicant owner is Cheetac Development Corporation, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for the conversion of an existing 55-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign to a digital display unit, LED, at 2252 Paradise Road in Ward III. Staff recommends approval. Items 16 through 18 are related. Item 16 is SCD 62724. The applicant owner is William Lyon Homes Incorporated, for possible action on a request for a major deviation of the Summerlin Development Standards to allow a proposed 5.5-foot screen wall with nine feet of retaining wall for a total wall height of 14.5 feet, where a retaining and screen wall totaling 10 feet is the maximum allowed, at 10 Colorado Tura Street in Ward II. Staff recommends approval. Item 17 is SCD 62725, for possible action on a request for a major deviation of the Summerlin Development Standards to allow a proposed 5.5-foot screen wall with eight feet of retaining wall for a total wall height of 13.5 feet, where a retaining and screen wall totaling 10 feet is the maximum allowed in Ward II. Staff recommends approval. And finally, item 18 is SCD 62726, for possible action on a request for a major deviation of the Summerlin Development Standards to allow a proposed 5.5-foot screen wall with 5.5 feet of retaining wall, retaining feet wall for a total wall height of 11 feet, where a retaining and screen wall totaling 10 feet is the maximum allowed in Ward II. Staff recommends approval. Is there any staff report on any of these items?
These are the one-plus-one motion, and we received the facts from the applicant indicating that they concur to the applications.
Okay, very good. I'll open this for public comment. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any discussion on the Planning Commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just go ahead and abstain on item number 10 due to a dispute with the property owner on that particular project. 11, 12, and 13, I own a bar within the same general vicinity, although I'm not opposed to bars in the area. I'm going to abstain, as I have in the past, and I'd like to pull item 15 forward. So that being said, I would make a motion to approve items nine through 14 and 16 through 18.
Very good. That motion carries, noting the abstention of the vice chair and director.
Yes, items nine through 14 and 16 through 18 are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk within 10 days.
Okay, thank you very much. We are now to the public hearing items. Item 15 has been pulled forward, and since I just read that into the record, let's go ahead and get the staff report on that, and then we'll hear from the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, the subject sign is located at the intersection of Sahara and Paradise Road, and is located approximately 550 feet from the nearest residentially-zoned property. Therefore, staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Justin Michaels, 820 Rancho Lane, here on behalf of the applicant. And we agree with staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Anyone wish to be heard either for or against this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Vice Chair?
Yes, Chairman Moody, through you. Just a quick question for the applicant. I'm sure you're aware of the, the light pollution and things like that from LED sign, and making sure that you're not putting on too bright of images where it's blinding people as they're driving down the street and things of that sort.
No, I think it'll be in compliance with everything that's going on in that area, considering all of the, you know, it's a pretty bright intersection from Las Vegas Boulevard to Sahara, so we'll make sure we're in alignment with everyone else.
Okay, perfect. That, that's really all I had to say. I had a couple of calls from a couple of people last minute, and just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. And a question for staff, if they're not in compliance through you, Mr. Chairman, if they, they're not in compliance with, you know, the illumination or something of that sort, then a code enforcement complaint could always be filed, and, you know, they'll have to modify their signs. Is that correct? That is correct. Okay, no further questions.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, item number 15, I move to approve, subject to staff's recommendation, or subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion carries.
Item 15, Mr. Chair, is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Okay, very good. I am going to pull two items forward, that being items 62 and 64. Item 62 is MSP 63173, and the applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. This is for possible action on a request for a master sign plan for the Historic Westside School at 330 to 350 West Washington Avenue in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. May we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, before you tonight is the application for a master sign plan for the Historic Westside School. The subject property was originally a two-building school that is currently being rehabilitated for use as a cultural center with commercial and office space. Signage will play an important role for prospective tenants while being mindful of the historic nature of the facility. The sign package before you tonight contains one monument sign to be located along the southern edge of the property adjacent to Washington Avenue, a wayfinding sign located interior to the subject site adjacent to the 1923 building, dedication plaques to be displayed on the 1948 Annex Building, tenant wall signs and suite number plaques to be mounted on the exterior of each individual suite, and hanging blade signs to be mounted above each individual suite along the exterior facade of the 1948 Annex Building along D Street. The sign types before you this evening were specifically designed to offer the city and their prospective tenants the ability to change the faces of the signs as leases and tenants change over time without doing any damage or harm to Historic Westside School buildings themselves. The city Historic Preservation Officer and the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission have found the proposed signage to be compatible with the historic character of the Historic Westside School while offering prospective tenants an effective method of identifying and advertising their commercial space. Therefore, they are recommending approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. Sam Tolman, Architectural Project Manager for Public Works, here to speak on the item, and we concur with staff's recommendations.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Is there any discussion amongst the planning commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My concern is that I don't know what the signs are going to look like. There's no pictures of the renditions of what they're going to look like, where they're going to go. Normally, when you come in front looking for approval of signage, there's a rendition of the sign, where it's going to go, it's against, you can physically see it against a building, you can see what the overlay is going to be, you can see what you're talking about, but I don't believe that we have anything in our backup material that shows that.
So are you seeing, Commissioner Creer, what I am on your...
I am, but that doesn't, you know, it doesn't show, you could show me, I'm not an architect, I'm not a, you know, I am advertising guy, so I'm a visual guy. When we make a presentation, we actually show what it's going to look like, fit, actually within the property. We have, now we're giving you a sort of a blanket, and believe me, I'm a fifth, I'm a, I live in the West Side, I live right down the street from there, KCP fan, I've, that's, this is my hood, and I want to make sure we do it right, but I, I, I don't know what we're approving.
Through you, Mr. Chair, may I? In designing the, the sign plan for this, it was hard for us to get real specific on the signs because we don't know yet the type of tenants. Whether they're going to be office, retail, restaurant, you know, social service providers, we're not quite sure. But we wanted to have in place the basic, you know, size limitations, the placement of the signs, and most importantly, the blade signs were specifically picked out in effect because we don't want to do any substantial damage to the building as tenants change. So the blade sign, the mounting itself will stay static to where just the blade, the actual, you know...
Sign plaque.
...would be able to be changed out without interfering or disrupting the building itself.
But if you aren't in the sign business, you probably have no clue what a blade sign is, right? That means, and if someone doesn't, doesn't know that, then how you should physically see it, and, and is it, is it going to be mounted on the...
Would you like to see where we, like, superimpose on the, like, a picture?
Well, yeah, I want to see where it's going to look. Is it, is it going to hang over the street? Is it going to be a, is it, is the sign going to be mounted on the, on the, on the building itself?
Yeah.
And then, now, and also, are we approving this, are we approving or not approving it? Are you coming back to the commission before you put the signs up, or this will give you...
This gives us the guidelines on the size of the signs themselves, and then the individual tenant, depending on who that is, would be able to pick out their logo that would physically go on the sign. But the materials and the size would remain what is approved today, that would not change. The only thing that would change would be the face itself of the sign, depending on the tenant that came into the space.
I, it's going to be tough for me to approve this because I just don't know what it is, where it's going to go, how it's going to look aesthetically. I, I'm going to assume that it's going to be nice, it's going to be aesthetic, because everything else is, seems to be coming along, D Streets corridors coming along, the rehabilitation of the school, KCP's new, new spaces, it's nice.
So Commissioner Creer, maybe, if you don't mind me interrupting, as we are looking at the elevations on our screen, I see number seven, which appears to be the proposed sign with the blades that, that you've mentioned. Is it possible to see an enlargement of that, so that we could get a better idea? Because I think that may be what you're talking about, Commissioner Creer.
Yeah, is that a sign that is going to be attached to the building? Is that a freestanding sign on the sidewalk? How is that presented?
Are we, which, are you talking, number seven, the wayfinding sign?
Yes.
Okay, that one is interior to the site. If you don't mind, I'll go to the podium so we can show you a overhead.
Maybe you could also show us item four, which is the monument sign, and then tell us where that's going to be.
Mr. Chairman, Sam Tolman with Public Works.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Mr. Chairman, Sam Tolman with Public Works, Architectural Project Manager, 330 North Rancho. If I may speak to this issue, the, the monument sign goes right, right here, and you can look at the monument sign on the elevation. That monument sign is a, monument sign usually sitting on the ground. It is attached, and the, the size of the lettering, the size of the sign comply with all the restrictions for the sign code, and this sign has, it actually lists the tenants that will be in the building. Right now, we have one tenant, we hope to have a bunch more, but this, if you look at item number four, that is the actual monument sign that I pointed out here. The wayfinding sign is located right here, and the wayfinding sign is kind of a duplication of the sign that's out on the street, because when you're driving down the street and you see monument sign, you don't necessarily know how to get to that suite from that sign until you go around to the parking lot. You will enter the, the site this way and circle in, and you'll be able to see the wayfinding sign. It'll show those same tenant suites and where they're located, and how you can get to them. And then when you go to the actual tenant suites, the signs, for instance, if you look at, on sheet ASK 045, number three, that shows you what that tenant sign is restricted to. So they can't come in and just put anything in there. This has to comply with the Historic Planning Commission requirements, and so they can put their logo on that particular face, but that's, that logo will change. Other than that, what you see is what they get. On the blade sign, if you go to item 10, the blade signs go along this side of the building. You've been down to the Westside School, and when you drive down Washington or D Street, you really don't see anything. And to help the tenants have a little advertising to the public that they are in this building, the blade signs have been designed to go along this street, so when they're driving down, they can see, oh, there is so-and-so, there's this shop. Then they can drive in to the facility and come to the wayfinding and find that tenant and their location, and go to their location. If you look at the sign here, the sign is hanging down from the Eve. If you look at the sign here, the sign is hanging down from the Eve. There's a specific size they can have that's been approved by the Historic Planning Commission, and their logo, you see a logo on there right now. They show Starbucks, but I don't, we don't have a Starbucks yet, so they're getting some free advertising.
Sure, can I, can I, can I ask a question?
But that logo will fit as shown on this sign, and they can't, the idea is so that they don't come in and start putting banners and all kinds of signage to try to point out where their facility is, that it's a uniform sign, master plan sign scheme that will be consistent with the historic nature of the building and per the signs code.
Mr. Chairman, if I may-
Please.
I can see what's going on here on ASK 045, details one through 10. It clearly shows the, the blade signs and what's going on. We can't control content and what's going on, those signs. We can only, I mean, we can on DDRC, but this doesn't fall underneath the DDRC, so therefore, we can't make our judgments based on what's actually going to be going on that sign. So it seems like this is a typical master, master sign plan application that's coming to us, it's come to us many a times in the past, not this particular site, but we see these all the time. It meets all the conditions of approval, and so therefore, it will seek my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carrer, are you satisfied with the response you've been given?
I am. I can tell you that in the future, I would love to see active physical signs, what they're going to look like. I know we, I'm not trying to control content, obviously, but, you know, the, just to have an overview of the site and to say there's going to be a sign that's going to go there doesn't quite cut it with me. You know, we, I like to see the sign, see a rendition of what the signs look like. I can actually get an idea of where it's going. So, I mean, I'm not going to, I want to see progress continue at the Westside School, so I'll support it, but I can tell you that I would love to see a lot more detail, even if it's offline, what that's going to look like.
Commissioner Cherry?
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion on item number 62, MSP 63173 for approval.
Thank you. Please vote. You did say 62, correct?
Yes, through the chair, yes.
A motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 62 is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The other item I will pull forward is under Director's Business. This is item 64, TXT 63107. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. This is for possible action on a request to amend LVMC 19.16.060 final map requirements to authorize under certain circumstances the early submit of improvement plans in relation to the final approval of required traffic or drainage studies and to provide for other related matters. Staff has no recommendation. Staff report, please.
Staff has no recommendation.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. Michael Cunningham, Building and Safety Manager for the City of Las Vegas. I'm here to speak on this item. Just to give a background on it, the purpose of this amendment is to provide an additional option for developers when submitting their civil improvement plans as the, as was read in. Currently, they have to have their drainage studies and traffic studies approved prior to submitting their civil improvement plans. This would allow them to submit it before then, allowing the reviews to happen concurrently, which will help speed up their permitting process. There are specific requirements that are in the amendment that the site would have to, excuse me, the site would have to meet in order to qualify for an at-risk submittal, and those are in the text amendment, but I'll go over those briefly. The project can't lie within the hillside overlay district, it can't be within a special flood hazard area, it can't exceed 20 gross acres, and they had to have received their tentative map approval and site development plan approval if it's required by Title 19. If it does meet those qualifications and this is passed, the developer would have the option to submit at risk. What they would entail would be a normal submittal, they would just have a letter included with that that states they're responsible for any design changes from those study approvals, any additional plan check fees, and to understand the permit will not be issued until those studies, the conditions of those studies are met. One additional item in this text amendment is note five. It's just a clarification that this subsection also applies to non-subdivision projects as well as subdivision. And with that, I'd like to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open this for public comment. Do any members of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion. Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, Mr. Cunningham, thank you for coming down here. Anytime you've making things easier on us as developers, I appreciate it. This has been something that's been really close to me for the past four years, and we would have to go in, submit drainage study, it would take four to six weeks to approve, and then you submit, resubmit, and it takes another two weeks to approve. And then you resubmit and gets another week of review time before you actually get a drainage study approved. Then you move to civil improvements, and your improvement plans, and you start going through that whole process, only to find out there's a conflict with, with the drainage plan, then the improvement plans get stopped down, and you have to go back in for a drainage planet, or drainage study update. And it's been so frustrating. I've talked to Betsy about this, Bob Beers, Councilman Coffin, I've talked to every person in the city, Chris Knight, and just been trying as hard as possible to get this thing changed. So I don't know where this come from, and I don't know if it's because I've constantly been in people's ears over the past five years, but I really appreciate you bringing this forward, and I'd like to be able to be the person who makes the motion on this tonight, as this will help out all developers. This process right here would have saved my first project 12 years ago in the City of Las Vegas, six months.
Wow. I don't see any other comments. Commissioner Quinn?
No.
Okay, let's have a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item number 64, TXT 63107, I make a motion for approval.
Please vote. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be forwarded to the City Council in the form of an ordinance.
All right, unless I'm wrong, I think our next item is item 31, MOD 62679. The applicant owner is 95 Management LLC. For possible action on a request for a major modification of the Kyle Canyon Development Standards to amend the Blended Land Use Design Guidelines in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed major modification consists of amending the blended use development standards and design guidelines so as to allow for maximum flexibility of developing a traditional commercial development. Specifically, the proposed amendment removes language specific to vehicle or circulation and connectivity while also amending language in sections from shall to should. Staff is in support of the proposed amendment as the City of Las Vegas is currently in negotiations with the master development concerning the third restatement of the development agreement and its associated master land use plan and development standards, wherein the blended land use designation is currently being proposed as being replaced by general commercial and medium-low attached land use designations. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Gronauer. I hope you wore comfortable shoes because you're going to be standing for a few minutes.
I'm all prepared for it, I hope. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. My name's Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the master plan community, Sky Canyon. I'm sure you're very familiar with it. They've already commenced construction, they have actually constituents living in this master plan community, and our community center is planned for its grand opening for March 16th, which we are very proud of. In the meantime, we continue to work with your city staff on items that we have to resolve in regards for future development. As Peter has mentioned, we've been working with your staff on further amendments to the development agreement that you'll be seeing in the near future, but in the time, in the meantime, we're getting ready to come in with a commercial shopping center with a grocery tenant, which is very much needed out here in the northwest area. If you're familiar with the northwest, especially in this area, that a grocery anchor tenant is definitely needed. The changes to the plan itself here tonight on the major mod will allow us to move forward with that, and within, if everything goes well, within the next two planning commissions from now, I'll be here with the site development plan review showing you exactly the grocery anchor tenant that will be coming in for the development in Sky Canyon. That being said, your staff is recommending approval, and I'm here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on item 31? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Is there any discussion on the planning commission? Commissioner Quinn?
No, I, no, there's no discussion. I'd just like to make a motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you regarding item number 31, MOD 62679. I make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item 31. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, item 31 will be heard by the City Council on March 16th, 2016.
Okay. Items 32 through 55 are related items. Bear with me, I need to read these into the record. I'll do so as efficiently as possible.
32 through 55?
Item 32 is ZON 62784. The applicant is Dr. Horton, and the owner is Azure and Torrey Pines 24 LLC. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE, Residence Estates, to RD, Single Family Residential Restricted, at the southwest corner of Azure Drive and Torrey Pines Drive in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 33 is VAR 62756. For possible action on a request for variance to allow an 874-foot residential block length where the maximum allowed is 660 feet in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 34 is VAR 62765. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 25 feet is required, and a 25-foot rear yard setback where 30 feet is required on Lot 1 of a proposed 20-lot single-family residential subdivision in Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Item 35 is VAR 62766. This is the same request as item 34, but with respect to Lot 2. 36 is VAR 62767. Same request with regard to Lot 3. Again, staff recommends denial as with item 35. Item 37, VAR 62768. Same request with regard to Lot 4 in Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Item 38, VAR 62769. Same request with respect to Lot 5 in Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Item 39, VAR 62770. Same request, but for Lot 6. Staff recommends denial, also Ward 6, as are all of these. Item 40, VAR 62771. Same request, but with regard to Lot 7. Staff recommends denial. Item 41, VAR 62772. Same request, but with respect to Lot 8. Staff recommends denial. Item 42, VAR 62773. Same request, but on Lot 9. Staff recommends denial. Item 43, VAR 62774. Same request, but with regard to Lot 10. Staff recommends denial. Item 44, VAR 62775. Same request, this time Lot 11. Staff recommends denial. 45, VAR 62776. Same request, this time Lot 12. Staff recommends denial. Item 46, VAR 62777. Same request, Lot 13. Staff recommends denial. Item 47, VAR 62778. Same request, Lot 14. Staff recommends denial. Item 48, VAR 62779. Same request, Lot 15. Staff recommends denial. Item 49, VAR 62780. Same request, Lot 16. Staff recommends denial. Item 50, VAR 62781. Same request, Lot 17. Staff recommends denial. VAR, VAR 62782. Same request, but on Lot 18. Staff recommends denial. Item 52, VAR 62783. Same request, Lot 19. Staff recommends denial. Item 53, VAR 62785. Same request, this time Lot 20. Staff recommends denial. Item 54, WVR 62786. For possible action on a request for a waiver to allow a 177-foot external intersection offset where 220 feet is the minimum distance separation required in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. And finally, item 55, TMP 62787. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 20-lot single-family residential subdivision in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Please have the staff report.
Mr. Chairman, staff recommends approval of the rezoning, block length variance, tentative map, and intersection offset waiver, as they will allow this parcel to be developed with lots that are comparable to surrounding development. In regard to the setback variances, staff notes there is no hardship associated with the site, which necessitates reduced setbacks for all 20 lots, and recommends denial of all setback variance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. In this matter, I'm representing Dr. Horton. If I could get your attention to the overhead, I could show you exactly where the property is located. As you can see on the aerial here, our property consists of approximately 6.08 acres of property. It's on the south side of Azure, which runs along northern property line, and it is bordered on the east side of Torrey Pines here, which is, to give you a more general idea of the location in the northwest, this is a 215, and up over here is the Jones Off-Ramp in the northwest. This is, as you can see here, an infill piece of property. Actually, this property was rezoned about 10 years ago for an RPD III development, which was for 21 homes. That, obviously, project expired. You're no longer allowed to come in by city municipal code for an RPD III. So what we did is came in with an RD zone change. Your staff is recommending approval of the RD zone change that we are requesting for. Here is the new layout of the project itself of 20 lots. With respect to one of the variances, staff is recommending approval of the overlenth block here for the cul-de-sac in this area. We're providing fire access, as I'm showing you, located here, coming out to Azure. So with respect to that variance there, staff is recommending approval. We are also getting a recommendation from staff for approval for the intersection here. It's 177 feet where 220 feet is required for the intersection separation, and staff is recommending approval for that. Our tentative map, because we are coming in with 20 lots, staff is recommending approval because the density comes in about approximately 3.2 dwelling units to the acre, where we're allowed to build up by the land use plan up to approximately 3.5 units to the acre itself. So with that being said, the zoning, the tentative map, and those, the waiver and the variances there, staff is recommending approval. We comply, obviously, with the densities in the area because we are compatible in the surrounding area. Next, that I'd like to discuss quickly, I guess there's some good news here, is although there's 20 applications for variances on the property itself, it kind of moves the agenda item a little bit quicker, because when we're done here, you only have about 10 items left on the agenda for tonight. But on a more serious note, what we have here is, because we had to explain this, we had a voluntary neighborhood meeting with the neighbors out in this area so they could understand it, because I believe you and anybody listening to the 20 variances that you just mentioned is, it sounds like a lot, it sounds a hell of a lot worse than what it really is when you take a look at the project itself. Essentially, what we're asking for is a front yard setback variance and a rear yard setback variance. Your code requires, because we are coming in with 20 lots, to come in with 20 separate variances for the same requests for the front yard setback and rear yard setback. So when you get the notice and you take a look at the agenda, it looks- So when you get the notice and you take a look at the agenda, it looks like we're asking for, we are asking for 20 separate variances, but it's all within the same setback for the front yard setback and the rear yard setback. So I wanted to make that clear, that although we're asking for 24 applications here for this project, and 20 of them are variances that staff is not recommending approval for, it really comes down to one issue or two issues, is the front yard setback and rear yard setback. So once when we got done explaining that to the neighbors, to understand the rationale for the variances itself, and why we're asking for that many, it came down to the elevations of the project itself. And one of the things that we did receive some support from the neighbors in the voluntary neighborhood meeting is, one of the things, if you're familiar with D.R. Horton, they're very popular with their single-story product. One of the things that we agreed to do, and it's on your tentative map as a condition, as if approved for these variances, that we would be coming in and building single-story homes, okay? We are planning a 20-lot subdivision to have single-story homes. That, within itself, definitely fits within the rural character of this area. It's better than having two-story homes, which we have the right to do two-story homes, but that's somewhat of the compromise that we look at as far as D.R. Horton is a builder in the northwest on lots of this size. That being said, the reason why you have a 10-foot setback on two of the three models that we are proposing to build in here, is we have a third car garage, as you can see, located here, and it goes from 10 feet to there, but we're providing up to 20 feet, obviously, to the garage door in the building itself. So that's where you get the 10 feet with respect to the front yard setback. And because we're coming in with a single-story building, you use more of the lot itself. Instead of a two-story building, where you'd be easier to meet those setbacks, we're asking also for a reduction on some areas up to 5 feet in the rear yard itself. To give you an idea, this is another model itself that would not require a 10-foot, 10-foot front yard setback. And then the other one here gives you an idea, another elevation of one of our other, of the three plans of what we're proposing. So with that being said, we believe that we do have a compelling justification here. We're coming in a more of a rural type of low-density neighborhood, where we do have some development up to 2.5 units to the acre. We have some other developments up to 3.5 units to the acre. We have some bigger lots behind us to the south, where some of the neighbors were in support of us coming in with single-story homes. We believe the density fits within the character of the area, along with the single-story homes. So that being said, we'd ask you to recommend approval of those variances that are lumped together, although it's just dealing with the front yard and rear yard setback on each individual lot. So that being said, I can answer any other questions that you may have.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm going to open this for public comment, and invite any members of the public who wish to be heard on any of these 23 or 24 items to come forward. Is there anyone else besides you, sir? If you'll all come forward, we have a few microphones, so just be ready to speak. Good evening. I'd like you to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's David Hall, 6321 Bull Ring Lane.
Go ahead, we'll finish with you before we hear from him.
I'm sure you can see the same pictures he just put up. I'm not sure how that qualifies as a rural house. So I speak not only on behalf of the homeowners, as well as a landowner. I own a home that's probably 150 yards from the proposed site that he's talking about, and I also own a lot that's also about the same distance from. So I'm also a homeowner, as well as a vacant lot owner in that spot.
Excuse me, please, through you, Mr. Chair, could he point where his house is on that map, please?
I don't know that that map's in front of him.
I'm one street south, right there, Bull Ring Lane, and across the, I'm like tatty corner, right there.
Oh, okay. I see it, thank you.
Oh, there we go.
Magical technology. So I'm right here, and I also own a lot next door.
So you are on a rural lot.
So the whole neighborhood is set up as a rural community, and as you go, you can't see it from the picture, because the picture conveniently only shows smaller lots that are north. But if you look further south there, those are all, the majority of those are rural lots as well, along Torrey Pines there going south. But conveniently, you can't see that in the picture. But it's a rural community. The majority of the lots are one-acre lots there, single home on those lots. So when you look at the photos that he put up there, like, that's not a rural home. I mean, you're talking, the house is 10 feet from the sidewalk, so I'm not sure how you can say that that's going to look. I mean, I can't find a single house anywhere in any of those neighborhoods, even in the small houses that he put on his photo there, that would look anything similar to what he's putting. Like, that is way smaller than any homes in that area. The house is directly to the east, right there. Granted, they may be on smaller lots, but those homes, the majority of those homes are 4,000, 5,000 square foot homes. So they may be on smaller lots, but they're still large homes, where, I don't know, he didn't say what the square footage is of the houses that he's proposing, but there's no way on those tiny lots that he's proposing not having a two-story house. I mean, I'm guessing the square footage is probably, I don't know, 1,800 square feet. I don't know what he's proposing, but it's nowhere near what that entire neighborhood is set up as. So if you come in and allow 20 homes put in there, that are going to all of a sudden be 1,800 square feet, and they're going to be on, I don't know, I'm assuming not even a quarter of an acre, I'm guessing. I don't know what his, he didn't state what his proposed lot size was going to be. But it's completely different than the entire neighborhood and everything. So not only is it going to detract from the neighborhood, but to me, it decreases my property value, because now, all of a sudden, across the street, where the reason I own a home and a lot there, that I'm going to build a second home there, is because it's a rural residential area. And if you look at Las Vegas, there's few areas now where you can buy a one-acre lot and have a home on a one-acre lot. Like, I mean, the majority of Las Vegas, there just isn't rural communities like this. And so there's a reason those things are zoned that way in the city plan, to have rural communities like that. And now, by allowing him to come in here and do that, it just further takes away the city plan to have rural communities, as well, as you can't note on there, but item number nine, I believe it was, is his next proposal one, which is one street south, Bull Ring Lane, which puts it probably 75 yards from my property, that he's planning to do the same thing on that lot. So you look at this whole neighborhood that's supposed to be rural residential, and now he's taken that vacant lot, and he's going to put 20 homes on it, and now you go south right there to Bull Ring Lane, one street over, and that's his next proposed project that he's coming to you to put more houses on there, that doesn't comply with the one home per one acre plan that the city set up with that whole zoning.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Chairperson, commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Jim Rogan, and I live on Bull Ring Lane, 6324, which is roughly the same distance that Dave just explained. I'm his neighbor across the street. Our residences on Bull Ring Lane, the average lot size is, per house, is a quarter of an acre. The concern of a majority of the neighbors that I spoke with, which were not aware of the public meeting, nor were they advised through mailers that there was the meeting today, just through word of mouth we found out, is the concern that this is going to affect their property values when they go to resell their homes. They purchased in this rural area with the hopes and promises that, in the future, when they decide to resell their homes, they're going to have that added value of being in a rural area. And the concerns are, not knowing the prices of these homes, the sizes of the lots, and how that's going to affect our area and the potential for resale value, is pressing on everyone's minds in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carlos Flores, and I live a little forward down to Jimmy and Bull Ring Lane, and I think I have the bigger house in the neighborhood, you know, according to all the properties. But I feel the same, the same way they feel, because, you know, I have a big house, and, you know, the value is going to go down after you put those small houses. And there, I don't think this is going to look good, because all the houses do a storage, and they're going to put one a storage. I don't think this is going to, they're good. So I feel the same way they feel. That's why I'm here. I was just getting home from work, so when he called me and said, Carlos, you want to go? I said, of course, why not?
Okay. Thanks for being here tonight. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on any of these items? Mr. Gronhour, let me give you a few minutes for rebuttal time, if you'd like.
Yes. I'll mention a couple items here. Number one is, this property is master planned for development up to 3.5 units to the acre on this property. It allows for RD zoning, okay? So I'm not coming in asking for a general plan amendment to ask to increase density, otherwise that's not allowed in the master plan. As a matter of fact, as I mentioned earlier, around 2006, a similar plan was approved on this property to allow 21 lots itself. Our lot sizes are in excess of 10,000 square feet. I believe in the staff report, they mentioned that they average roughly over 11,000 square feet. So with respect to the design guidelines in regards to what you can build on this property, we fall within the density that is actually similar just to the east of us in this area here, which is an RPD-3 project, okay? When you had your planned development communities in your previous code to come in and do densities, which is analogous to today of an RD zoning, of what we're asking for. So with respect to the density at 3.2 units to the acre, we fall within the general plan amendment, or excuse me, to the general plan itself. So we're not asking to change the land use designation. It's allowed to be built here as far as the density is concerned. The sizes of these lots are no different than the lots that are across the way. Matter of fact, probably larger in some of these other, in these instances, since we have 10,000 square foot minimums. So where the few gentlemen that had the discussion on the east side here, they're closer to probably that development of smaller lots than what we have proposed here. With respect to the floor plans itself and the price ranges, you're dealing with floor plans that are over 2,000 square foot homes that you're going to be dealing with. That's the living area itself, without counting garage and the patios and all the other square footage space, but I'm just giving you on the living area itself. In addition, you're in the mid-400s of price points in regards to the project itself, as far as what you're pricing out in this area. So those are the issues that I believe that were brought up, mainly discussing about the zoning itself, the price points, the sizes of homes. If there's anything else I missed, please help me, but I believe those were the issues.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public comment and open this for discussion on the planning commission, beginning with Commissioner Quinn.
Good evening, Mr. Gronhour. Did you notify the neighbors and have a neighborhood meeting about this project? Because you're, you know, you usually...
Yeah, we went through the proper, when I say the proper city channels. First of all, we're not required to have a neighborhood meeting.
I understand that.
And what we did in working with staff, because we understand anything in the northwest, it's just one of those things that we are accustomed to, having those meetings. Your staff is very good in telling applicants, you need to, you should go out and have a voluntary meeting. We did have a voluntary meeting about a couple weeks ago. We worked with your staff in getting the mailing list, we mail it out, we work on the notification of what it needs to say. So there's a process there. We've worked on that process. You had city employees there, you had the liaison for the councilman that was also there at the meeting. As I mentioned, there were issues that were discussed. There's backup in there in your staff report that mentions some of the issues that were discussed. I do know, and I could represent, I was not at the meeting, my partner Stephanie Allen was. There are two existing lots that are bigger than our development, that I can tell you that those neighbors, as she explained to me, were happy that we were doing the single-story homes in that area instead of just doing two-story homes. That's immediately adjacent to us. I don't know why, if, and how the gentlemen that were here are claiming that they didn't receive notice.
Yeah, that was my concern, how they were cut out.
We've sent the notices out as staff directed us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gronhour.
I guess I have a few comments. First, I know you did hold a neighborhood meeting, and that is not required, but I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do when you're proposing something like this. I read the minutes of that meeting. I understand that about 10 people attended, that there was a general consensus among the neighbors that showed up, although there were some concerns about traffic and reduced block length. But the thing that was most important for me was to see that this would remain single-story, especially with the surrounding neighborhoods. I've looked at this carefully. I appreciate what these gentlemen have said, especially in the rural areas, and will tell them that, you know, this is becoming more and more frequent, that, you know, as the city gets built out, we see higher density around some of those rural areas. And I feel like we bend over backwards to make sure we preserve those areas for them. You know, sometimes the neighbors come in, you know, in a new development and say, hey, they're riding horses out there. Well, yeah, they are. They've been there way before you got there, and they will continue to be there, so we try and protect them. But in the end, I think this is compatible with the surrounding areas, especially when you look what's immediately to the north and to the east of the proposed development. And because you are within the density of the master plan, and because I think it's inevitable that this is going to get developed, you'll see my support on this tonight. Any other comments? Commissioner Trowbridge?
Thank you. Being the old guy up here, I'm going to give a speech about old people's needs. You know, when you start talking about being a little older than some of you folks are, a single-story home is very attractive. You look in this neighborhood and you try to find a 2,000-square-foot house new with a base price of $450,000, and I have a tough time saying that's going to devalue your neighborhood, because most people, when you buy a new home, the first thing you do is you put in the patio cover, you put in the patio, the pool, the jacuzzi, the landscaping, and all of a sudden, that $450,000 house, you've got 550 into it, personal experience. And those types of communities, where you're talking of, you know, 450, 550-valued home, they don't devalue a neighborhood. You're getting older people primarily, childless, there's no drain on the school system, they're not going to be generating a lot of traffic back and forth to work, you've got a little mini Sun City going out there. And therefore, I'm going to, I'm going to support it. I think it's a nice project, and the builder that's proposing this has an excellent reputation. It's a self-contained little unit there. I think it's going to be a nice little project, and increase the value of your homes.
Unless there are any other comments, I'll entertain motions on these items.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the motions, starting with item number 32, ZON 62784. Move to approve.
Item 32 is approved.
Mr. Chairman, item 33, VAR 62756. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries. And keep in mind, we're going to move quickly through these, and so we may have to give the clerk a little bit of time to catch up with us. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item number 34, VAR 62765. Move to approve.
Please vote. Commissioner?
Just a point of clarification, so approval, so not go with staff's recommendation of denial, then? Just want to make sure.
That's correct. Motion is to approve.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 35, VAR 62766. Move to approve.
Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, item number 36, VAR 62767. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 36, VAR 62767. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 36, VAR 62767. Move to approve.
Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, item number 37, VAR 62768. Move to approve.
Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, item number 38, VAR 62769. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 39, VAR 62769. Mr. Chairman, item number 39, VAR 62770. Move to approve.
Vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 40, VAR 62771. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 41, VAR 62772. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 42, VAR 62773. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 43, VAR 62774. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 44, VAR 62775. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion also carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 45, VAR 62776. Move to approve.
Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, item number 46, VAR 62777. Move to approve.
Please vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 47, VAR 62778. Move to approve.
Please vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 48, VAR 62779. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 49, VAR, VAR 62780. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 50, VAR 62781. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 51, VAR 62782. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 52, VAR 62783. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 53, VAR 62785. Move to approve.
Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, item number 54, WVR 62786. Move to approve.
Motion is to approve item 54. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 55, TMP 62787. Move to approve.
Please vote. A motion carries. Thank you, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, items 32 through 55 will all be heard by the city council on March 16, 2016.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. Moving on to item 56, ZON 62700. The applicant owner is 2316 Charleston Mob LLC for possible action on a request for rezoning from CD Design Commercial to C1 Limited Commercial at 2316 West Charleston Boulevard in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. May we please have the staff presentation?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested the change of zoning on the subject property from CD Design Commercial to C1 Limited Commercial, which is consistent with the existing service commercial general plan, land use designation on the subject property, and surrounding commercial development to the north, east, and west. The applicant has indicated that they intend to combine the parcels on the subject site into a single property so they can proceed with facade improvements for the existing building. Currently, the applicant is unable to obtain building permits since the building is currently situated on separate parcels with two different zoning districts. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested zone change. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Your name and address, please.
Ben Girard, 801 Las Vegas Boulevard, here on behalf of the applicant. This mainly consists of some housekeeping, the architect for the project, and working with staff on some upcoming facade improvements. We noticed the zoning is not even a zoning designation that's recognized by the city anymore. Lot lines existed that were never removed during their original development, so it's really just cleaning up to what the zoning should be and eventually removing those lot lines that run through the middle of the building currently.
Okay, very good. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on item 56? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any discussion on the commission? Commissioner Quinn?
Good evening, sir. So you're considering this just housekeeping items? And is the building going to stay then as is, as a medical office building, which you know is the core to Councilwoman Tarkanian's? It's the start of where the medical district starts, so I would like to just know, it's really not my business, but is that your intent?
Yes, that is the intent. It's actually Southwest Medical Associates currently occupy the building. They are going to move out in April on a temporary basis. The building facade's going to be improved, and the interior's going to be renovated, and then they're going to move back in. So it's a pretty successful project to keep the tenant in its current location.
Okay, so they're, they've committed to coming back and, and all that stuff?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm Phyllis Schwartz. I'm the neighbor, 2324 West Charleston. And I was just wondering, are they expanding or changing anything to the property or just redoing it?
Ma'am, can you address your comments through me, the chair?
Yes, I was just wondering.
We actually closed the public comment, but I, I think it's important for you to be heard, so I'm going to reopen that so that you can answer your question.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
If you'll just address the chair, that way we keep things in order here. So can you repeat your question, please?
Okay, I'm Phyllis Schwartz. 20, I own the property at 2324 West Charleston, which is contiguous just west of this property.
Okay.
I'm the direct next-door neighbor. And I was just wondering, are they expanding the property? Are they just renovating what's there? Or what is their intent? So...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Girard. Invite you to just give a brief response.
Yes, and I, I know where this is coming from. Originally, when the tenant was looking to stay, they needed about double the square footage they currently have, or they were leaving the building. We were actually, actually looking at her property to acquire and expand the building and add a parking structure at one point. Since then, they've found a new location for that additional 50,000 square feet, so it really just is a renovation of the existing facility with no additional additions to the building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
No.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion for approval of zone change 62700, following staff's recommendations.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion carries. Item 56 is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item 56 will be heard at the March 16, 2016 city council meeting.
Okay, thank you. We are now to related items 57 and 58. Item 57 is SUP 62674. The applicant is S2W LLC, and the owner is Trails Village Center Company General Partnership for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 4,475-foot, square-foot pub, bar, or lounge tavern use at 1916 Village Center Circle Suite 7 in Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Related item 58 is SUP 62677 for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 4,475-square-foot gaming restricted use within a proposed 4,475-square-foot pub, bar, or lounge, that is tavern use in Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. May we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed uses are located in the Village Center Summerlin Land East District on a portion of a 17-acre parcel which is utilized as a shopping center. Staff has determined that the proposed pub, bar, or lounge and gaming restricted uses are compatible with the commercial uses located in the area. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both requests with conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we hear from the applicant, can I get an idea how many of you are here to speak on either item 57 or 58? Okay, thank you. It looks like the majority of the people here tonight are to speak on these two items, and so I'm going to impose some time restrictions. Ms. Lazovich, if we can limit your introductory remarks to 10 minutes, put a timer on you. And for the members of the public, if you want to know where the timers are, they are behind the monitors up here, behind the microphones that you'll speak on. They're a little tough to see, but if you'll listen closely for the beep and try and conclude your remarks at the end of your two minutes, that will prevent me from having to, to cut you off. And then, so we'll give the members of the public two minutes each for any comment, either for or against, and then Ms. Lazovich will give you some time for rebuttal at the conclusion. So your name and address, please.
Okay, Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive here tonight on behalf of the applicant. As your staff read into the record, there are two special use permits, one for gaming and one for a pub, bar, and lounge. The location is in Summerlin. Typically, if you are outside the boundaries of Summerlin, we would refer to this type of application as a tavern, but when you're inside the boundaries of Summerlin, it is referred to as a pub, bar, lounge. The location, as your staff mentioned, is inside a commercial shopping center. It is known as the Trails Village Center. And the applicant that I am representing are the owners of the bar. The owners are James and Joe Wickman, as well as Peter Simon. They are in the audience tonight, should you have any questions for them. They currently own four other locations. All of the other locations are actually in unincorporated Clark County. There is one at Tropicana in Durango, which is near Spanish Trails. Another location is at Las Vegas Boulevard in Pebble. Third, St. Rose Parkway in Bermuda. And a fourth location at Grand Canyon and Flamingo. Question has come up about how this site was selected for us to file this application, and it requires a little bit of history about the center. The center itself is owned by the Christiansen family. It was built a long time ago. It's been there for a long time, and they are still the owners of it. Many of you who live or visit that area would know that center was anchored for a long time by a Vons. Unfortunately, Vons closed, and when they closed, it was reopened as a Haggins', and then that went under and it sat vacant for some time. The Christiansen family felt so strongly that that center needed to be anchored by a grocery tenant that they paid $3 million to acquire the option to ensure that they could select who would go back into that Vons location. There was some discussion about a smart and final going in to that Vons location. The Christiansen family didn't feel that was the right tenant for that particular location. They paid the $3 million to buy the option, and they worked to get Albertsons to come back in. It is publicly known now that an Albertsons will be going back into that center. Along that line, I wanted to tell you that story because they feel very strongly about that center and about who their tenants are. So in the particular location, which if you can go to the overhead, I'll show you where it is. Actually, it's shown on your, you can see it, it's in the corner, on the corner of the two streets on your overhead right now. They, that particular location has had a number of restaurants attempt to go in and operate. It was at one time a Ferrero's, it was a Chianti Cafe, it was a breakfast place, it was a sushi place, and I believe one others. Fortunately, unfortunately, those restaurants did not make it. So the Christiansens went and did some research about a tenant that they thought could, could thrive in that location, and they visited several taverns. And they actually came to my clients, the bar, after they visited their locations, which were in the county. They felt that they were an upscale bar and restaurant, and that it would fit in nicely with the overall center, and so they approached my clients, and obviously, we're here tonight before you asking for approval to put this type of use there. In addition to that, on the overhead, and it's part of your backup, is a letter from Howard Hughes, signed by Kevin O'Rourke, stating that they are in support of this particular tenant, the bar, to go into this location. Howard Hughes is obviously very invested in Summerlin. They want to make sure that they have good operators, good, successful centers, and so they have written a letter of support. As I mentioned, the bar, in our opinion, is an upscale bar and restaurant for persons 21 and over. If you go into any of their locations, this will be the menu that you, I'll go to this mic. This will be the menu that you will get, leather-bound menu with, and I won't read any of the items, but just to show you the sheer amount of food items that they have, this is their standard menu in all of their locations. They have a number of appetizers, entrees, breakfast items. They serve food 24/7. Their kitchen is always open and always ready to serve anything on this menu. For those of you who are hungry right now, I brought pictures of food items that they actually make in their location. You've got salads, desserts, some breakfast options, as well as an appetizer that I'll put right there. So they take great pride in the food that they, that they make, that they serve. They take a lot of pride in the fact that the owners actually are all born and raised here in southern Nevada, and they, they own the, all of these operations, and they have over 60 employees. They pay benefits. They care a lot about the community, they care a lot about their employees, and they run really, really good operations. On January 26, we held a voluntary neighborhood meeting at the Summerlin Library, which was close to this. As your staff report indicates, there are about 44 people who attended that neighborhood meeting. There were people there, and you'll hear from both sides tonight. There were people there who were in support of it, there were people there who were in opposition to it. I won't speak for those who were in opposition or even support. I'll let them do some of the talking. But at the end of the neighborhood meeting, I was asked by a member of the audience to ask for a hand count of those who were in support or opposed, and the hand count was 19 in support with eight opposed. One of the issues that came up at the neighborhood meeting, again, as I mentioned earlier, is this is an establishment for 21 and over. That does mean that they, while they do serve food, they do also allow smoking. And so an op, a discussion was had about, would we be having any outdoor dining options? At the time that we submitted this application, we did not show outdoor dining, and I actually said at the neighborhood meeting, when the question was asked, that there wouldn't be anything on the outside. However, after the neighborhood meeting and in some further conversations with Councilwoman Beers's office, he feels that it would be a good amenity to offer a smoke-free option. So we understand by code and working with your planning department that I could add the, an area on the outside, immediately outside the door of this establishment, to be part of this area and this restaurant and bar, where you could have a smoke-free dining and drinking option. I wanted to put that on the record because I said something different at the neighborhood meeting, and I did want you to know where that came from. So in summary, I appreciate staff's recommendation for approval of both of the items. Just want to reiterate again that this applicant was carefully selected and vetted by the landlord, as well as Howard Hughes, and that at the neighborhood meeting, it's always difficult for people, whether they're supportive or opposed, to leave their families, come out, and spend the nights with us here at these hearings. So I do appreciate the people that came to the neighborhood meeting. A lot of those who were in support unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but I appreciated them coming in and raising their hands of support at the neighborhood meeting. I would be happy to answer any questions, or I can wait until you get the testimony and come back up. Oh, I'm sorry, there was one other thing that I was asked to do. I do think he's going to speak, but there's an additional card that I was asked to turn in. It is from Mark and Brenda Bobbyars, if I said that correctly. And then additionally, the terrace is one, which is a condo association that is located in the vicinity near TPC, has expressed some support, and I was asked to just read their names quickly into the record. Leslie Gospinj such, Robin Brusino, Rick Myers, Barb Patrick, and Melissa Delgarza. Again, I was asked to just read those, and I told them I would. So with that, I'll close my testimony unless there's questions.
Okay, thank you. We'll invite you back up if there are questions. We'll invite you back up if there are questions. For those of you who are here to speak on either of these items, I'm going to open this for public comment. If you would do me a favor, keep in mind there are three microphones, and if whoever's going to be next could be ready at another microphone, we'd appreciate it. If you don't, repeat what someone has already said in front of you, but feel free to tell us what you want within your two minutes, a lot of time. Remember to state your name and address, please.
Thank you. I'll go first, and I'll be brief. My name's Greg Wild. I'm attorney here in town. My address is twenty-one oh four Jade Leaf Court. It's approximately a half, one-half mile to the northwest, excuse me, the northeast. I just want to point out to the council that immediately to the north is a ball field where my kids practiced soccer and baseball for years. Many of the practices last late into the night. When the kids walk from those premises, they walk right through the shopping center parking lot to Fabulous Freddy's immediately to the south, or they walk to the library across the street, or to the synagogue. This is the main location where kids walk and ride their bikes during the summers, during the evenings, and I'd rather not have a tavern there. In addition, the city has a park with a swimming pool right immediately to the north, where they have evening events. They open their swimming pool, sometimes they show movies at night. Again, this area is full of children at night. So I would ask the commission to deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wild.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Wild. I'm Greg's oldest son. My address is eighteen oh nine Sierra Oaks Lane, which is immediately southwest of the proposed property, not even three, four hundred yards. I don't feel comfortable with a bar opening anywhere near my house. I moved back to Summerlin so that my kids could be safe, and because I had a wonderful childhood walking and perusing those areas. There's a Dairy Queen just three doors down, which is where I know that families gather after these ballgames, and also after the ballet performances at the local ballet academy, and treat their kids to rewards and treats. I do not feel that this would create a conducive atmosphere for those families or for those children attending the Dairy Queen, or the Port of Subs, or the McDonald's, or the Fabulous Freddy's. I also feel that this map does not represent the area correctly, as I know that they've cropped out the local middle school, which is Becker Middle School, and Lummis, which is immediately to the east of that. There's also the Meadows down the street, Bonner Elementary, slightly more southwest, and parks that here are not highlighted because they are not city parks, but community parks. And thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
My name is Bo Lansum. I live at two zero one seven Sedona Creek Circle in Summerlin. I oppose this pub, this tavern going in, for reasons that I would assume are self-evident. There's reasons why people have to be twenty-one to drink, and I see PSAs on television all the time saying buzzed drinking is drunk driving, or buzzed driving is drunk driving. And people of necessity have to drive their vehicles to this location and drive home. And I'm not an imbiber, and I'm not a rocket scientist, but I think this is obvious why this shouldn't go here, for the reasons that were stated. The park is adjacent. Schools are all around. I live in this community with my wife and five children, and I work hard to have the privilege of living in a community like this, where I don't have Chevys up on blocks down the street, and I don't have people driving to and from places where they can, where they're required to drink, or maybe they're not required, but it's implied that that's what they're going to do. If I told my wife I were at a bar, that would be a lot different than saying I was at the library. I think we all understand those differences. So for reasons that I think are self-evident and obvious, I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, Mr. Chairperson. I'm Ron Yocum, and I live at eighteen sixteen Linton Hill Lane. And one of the things we love about this area, and we moved there, and we've been there only about eight or nine years with my wife, is the fact that it is the community that it is. It's just a wonderful place to live. We don't have a lot of the elements that we have, that you can obtain anywhere else. In fact, if you go probably three to five miles in any direction, you can be at one of these taverns, and that's fine. But it's not near the park, it's not near the swimming pool, they're not near the library, they're not near any of these facilities. So we just don't think it's appropriate for gaming or a tavern to be put in there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairperson, fellow commissioners, Joseph Jean Casper, ninety-three twenty-four Jade Crest Drive. I'm in support with all my other friends that are up here with their comments. One big thing that when I moved to Summerlin, that was a big thing that people asked me, like, "Why'd you move to Summerlin? Why are you paying your association fees?" And I said, "Well, it helps maintain your property, it helps maintain your value of your home." And I think we've all done that out there. Like the one gentleman said, you don't see cars on cinder blocks, you don't see your next-door neighbor's kids doing a brake job on the front lawn and stuff like that. So I think we're paying a little bit extra price for what we achieve to get some value. I think with this enterprise going there, and I'm not against it, I'm not against businesses to make money, but I think the hours of operation, I think, what kind of clientele are we going to be attracting to that area at one, two, three, four o'clock in the morning, where, like they just said, you have ball fields, you have nothing else going on in that area besides maybe twenty-four hour fitness and maybe Fabulous Freddy's? And I don't think that's going to be drawing the crowd that maybe this establishment will be. And that's one of the many reasons why I'm opposed to this establishment. Thank you.
My name is Courtney Jants, five zero seven three Shadow Valley. I'm the general manager of our most recent establishment on Las Vegas Boulevard. I've worked for the company since we opened the newest location for a little over a year. I've been in the gaming tavern business since I was twenty-one. And this has been the most reputable company that I've worked for, as far as the way they run their business, the clientele. I can tell you from firsthand experience dealing with customers, I'm on the front line with everybody. We make sure everyone gets a safe ride home. You know, we run a staff that's very, very responsible in comparison to other taverns in the city. And we are very involved in the community. You know, I myself have a family, and, you know, the company supports everything within that. We donate a lot of money to the community, and do a lot of things within to help better everything around us as well. So I am in support of putting the establishment in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Spencer Judd. I live at ninety-four twenty Mountaineer Avenue. I have a home that is right behind the ballparks that are adjacent to this shopping center. Note that those ballparks and that park there closes at nine o'clock. The gates are closed. The stores in that area close pretty early, and it's a pretty safe place to have at night. If you look at the map, you'll see that there's a roundabout right in front of that. There's another roundabout just down the street from that. It's, access to that is right off Summerlin Parkway. But this little shopping center is a nice little area, in a very safe residential area that has been traditionally, for the eighteen years that I've lived in my home, quiet. I've raised nine kids in that area. I don't have a problem at this point having my kids go out and walk around at night, and I do, I'm out with my dog quite often at night, and it's quiet, and I'm afraid that an establishment like this, that's open very late, could change that. I don't have a problem with the owners that are trying to do that. I have a problem with where they're trying to put this establishment. I think this is the wrong place. There are plenty of other places that are not such a dense residential area or areas that don't have a park. You've got on the map that's on the screen right now, there's a, directly above that is the Sheldon Adelson Academy. It's a school just down the street. It was mentioned you have another elementary school, another middle school. You've got a Jewish synagogue that meets directly across the street. You've got a couple of other churches just down the street. This is not an area for a pub. I think they mentioned that a couple of restaurants have closed, and I think there's a reason for that. This is just not the place for that type of establishment. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. My name is Carly Phelps. I live at twenty-two thirteen Starline Meadow Place, which is the neighborhood across from the gentleman who just spoke, behind the ballfields but to the west. My family and I moved to Summerlin about three and a half years ago. We selected this neighborhood for the absence of gaming and bars. It's a family-oriented neighborhood. To the west of the proposed location, there's a nail salon, a haircutting place, and a bank. And to the right, there are a number of restaurants and a Dairy Queen, as previously mentioned. I agree, this just is not a good location. Across the street is a park, to the other direction is a library. My family and I walk these streets, ride our bikes through this shopping center to get dinner, to get ice cream. This is not an appropriate place for an establishment like this. I don't oppose an establishment like this in general in Las Vegas, but I'm here to represent other families like myself, young families, who moved to this area to find a safe place to raise their families, a place where we don't have to worry about drunk drivers, a place where we don't have to worry about our children being exposed to drinking and smoking and forms of entertainment that are not appropriate for their age. And for these reasons, I oppose this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
The commission, my name is Jack Buchanan. I live at one zero three two-nine Timberstar Lane. That's in Summerlin. I've lived there since two thousand and eight. It is outside of the zoning radius, but I did want to speak on behalf, and in support of this location. I am a longtime and born and raised resident of Las Vegas. I care greatly about, you know, this community and also businesses. As a business owner here with my law practice, being in the city of Las Vegas for over close to forty years, I care about seeing business owners that I think are going to do well. I will say I'm biased in the sense that I have known the Wickmans for approximately fifteen years since high school. Ultimately, what I think is important to note is that where there may be a negative connotation with taverns, and some of them get a bad rap, so to speak, with the gaming and that sort of thing, I think that this location and the company and the operators, they exist a little bit on another side of the spectrum on what type of location that they run. The food and the customer service, the cleanliness, the safety is second to none. I would implore, I think, anybody who is looking at this in opposition, as far as it being a tavern and what that is, and how that may relate to other taverns in the community, to visit it and to see what type of operation they run. They have a number of operations in town. I live, my Summerlin residence is closer to their Grand Canyon Flamingo location. I patronize it a lot, and irrespective of my friendship with them, I think that their location and the operation they run honestly does exist different than a lot of taverns in this community. So I think that the commission should certainly consider that in looking at all aspects of their business on an individual basis, rather than as a whole, as taverns can sometimes be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi, my name is Tammy Stilson. I live at twenty-two oh one Menifee Court, right up the trail from this establishment. I've lived here my entire life. I was born and raised here. I've raised my family here for eighteen years in the same home. We walk every day down the trail. We raised our boys at the baseball field right there, the library, the schools, the shopping center. We walk every day. We walk our dogs. We have our children. My older son is in the process of buying a home in Summerlin. He'd like to raise his family there as well. Again, I've lived here my entire life. The reason we live in Summerlin, my husband's in law enforcement in Henderson. He drives twenty-eight miles one way to work every day. He's been there for twenty-five years. We made a decision to live in Summerlin specifically to raise our family. It's advertised Summerlin as a family community. We're in Las Vegas. We have strips. We have the bars on every corner and every place in Las Vegas. I would like to beg that you do not allow a bar tavern to go in our neighborhood where we raise children. They walk at the, there's children everywhere. It's obvious. A bar is not a place in our neighborhood. We specifically moved there to be in a neighborhood in a family environment. We can go to a tavern at any corner, any main cross. The other four locations they mentioned, I'm sure, are lovely, and I would like to attend there sometime to have dinner, however, not in my neighborhood. They're all on main cross streets, on full forty-five mile an hour streets. We're in a twenty-five mile an hour zone in our neighborhood, and I'd like to ask that you please not allow this establishment. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kristy Allen. I live at twenty thirty-three Spring Rose Street, right across from the pool. I think a lot of you, pretty much everything has been said. I just think that what you're hearing is, it's not really that anyone here opposes. I mean, we would love to have good food in our neighborhood. We would love that, and we would love to have family-friendly food and places in our neighborhood. It's just that this particular area is all centered on family. There just aren't very many places in the world anymore where you put your cell phones away, and you put things down, and you focus specifically on family. Everything you've heard about in this neighborhood is specifically geared and designated for families and children, specifically children. And that's what we want to protect. It's not that we're opposed to these people. I'm sure that they have an amazing, I would want to eat there. The food looks good. I've heard the food's good. It's just that it's hard to protect things that matter, and this is an area where people focus on family. Parades go by there, egg hunts happen across the street. That's where they have the Summerlin Egg Hunt, is across the street. They have Christmas things over there. So as you can see, if you haven't been out to that neighborhood, it's such a small area that's all about family. That's why we're here. It's not because we oppose the scene of Las Vegas. We live here. But we moved there in this specific area because of what was there for children. That's why I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner Mooney, Chairman. My name is West Allen. I live at twenty thirty-three Spring Rose Street. I have been there in that area for almost twenty-five years. I watched the Christiansens build, or be part of this development. I watched this development go up. I was there when the salespeople when we bought our house said it's going to be restaurants and nice places to eat. I have raised my children here. I rise and come here this evening because there are many who can't. I'm here this evening because I ask you to exercise judgment as a planning commission, and I do that for an important reason. We've heard here tonight that a wealthy family, specifically Mr. Christiansen, and also Howard Hughes, who Mr. Christiansen, I know, knows very well, have decided together that, yes, we're going to cut our losses, and we're going to figure out a way to make some money on the spot that's been depressed. I admit that that's been the case. This has been a hard spot to keep busy. But what I'm asking the commission to do is to do what many objectively would say shouldn't even be a question, and that is this specific location was specifically designed by Summerlin and calculated to be a place where they would attract families and children. There is a Little League field that is extremely busy. There is a swimming pool that has Summerlin children that come to do a swimming team. There's a Nevada Ballet Theater. There is the library. There are schools. There's a Jewish community down the road. This is an area called the Trails because people walk and go about this area constantly. And now the plan is to bring in a tavern, a twenty-four seven bar tavern with video poker, where people can go anytime. And what's most remarkable is that no one's mentioned yet that this location is precisely where many families have to park so they can walk from their minivans to the baseball field across the street because there's not enough parking there. And so what we're contemplating is bringing a tavern exactly where people will leave the tavern after having however many drinks they're going to have, and they're going to think, "Well, I'm close to home, so I'm okay." And now they're going to drive through the area that people get out of their minivans with their families and walk across the street to the Little League Park. It's antithetical to the very premise of what we have here, and so I ask this commission to exercise judgment, to look into why Howard Hughes said yes. And you read that letter very carefully. It's very specific and narrow. This person is okay. They picked their winners. But generally speaking, we ought to understand why they're so anxious to have this tavern here. Most importantly, as a commission, I ask you to do your job and exercise judgment here, despite what staff has said, because it is legal, yes. Howard Hughes did say- Howard Hughes did say yes, so staff check the box. But I ask this Commission to exercise judgment on behalf of children who can't be here and families who can't be here. This is a neighborhood that was intended to be for families and we're putting a bar right where people walk with their children. That should be enough for this Commission, I would hope. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Allen.
My name is James Wilkens. I live at 9720 Forest Gone Place. It's immediately adjacent to this property. I've been a proud Summerlin resident for 24 years. Having said that, Summerlin is in the city of Las Vegas. And there are many establishments in town adjacent to parks and areas in the city of Las Vegas. These types of properties coexist. At the area of Washington and Buffalo, there's a park many times the size of ours. And there's two bars adjacent to that park that are open 24 hours. This area needs a variety. I've raised my family. My daughter's gone to the schools. We have walked these same trails, gone to these baseball fields, gone to the Friday night concerts in the park. Families are not just kids. Families, my adult parents live up the road in Sun City. I would love to be able to go local somewhere, close by, with them and have dinner. And I understand, I wouldn't take my daughter in there, but that shouldn't exclude all the people that need something in the area. And everyone wants to talk about people going out of there and driving. I think it's important to note that the majority of the patrons in this establishment would be the same neighbors that we all talk about. One of the things that was brought up in the media a couple of weeks ago was, for multiple people, it'd be nice to have someplace to walk to. Everyone here has talked about walking. We walk to that Dairy Queen, Porta Subs, whatever. We'd like to be able to walk to that, too. I'm not stupid enough to get in my car and drive after I've been drinking. And I'd like to give the benefit of the doubt to other people out there. I know there are people that will do it, but you have to give people the credit that they're going to be accountable for their actions. So I'm fully in support of this. And as the lawyer said, there's a lot of people that didn't show up here tonight. They showed up at this meeting two weeks ago. Over two to one in favor of this project. And I know typically they don't show up to these meetings. It's only people that are opposed to it. So I support this project.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else besides this gentleman who wish to be heard on this tonight?
Hi, my name is Mark Babiarz. I'm at 9425 San Laguna Court. And I am right next to there also. I did go to the meeting because we were invited. And by going to the meeting, after the meeting, we were also invited to go visit the establishment, which we did. There was a group of eight of us that all live in the neighborhood that took it upon ourselves to go to the neighborhood and to go see the bar. And we all thought it was a great exit. We think it would be a great thing to be added to our community because we, too, would like to walk, like the last gentleman says. We are adults. We would like to walk. Most people drink and drive. They're going to do it regardless, whether they come into that area or they go down to the strip. They're still going to drive through the same neighborhoods after they've been drinking. This way here, the majority of the people are going to be walking there, more than likely. It's a great access to a lot of people in the neighborhood that can walk without having to drink and drive. And with that being said, I think it would be a great addition to the community for that reason. Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, Ms. Lazovich. How about I give you five minutes for rebuttal? Is that sufficient time?
Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza, for the record. So just a couple of brief points. I'm not even entirely sure I need the five minutes, but I'll answer any questions that you might have. The prior restaurants, with the exception of the breakfast place that were located in this suite, all were restaurants that served alcohol. In your code, there is no limitation that restaurants close at any hour. So any of those restaurants could have chosen, should they wanted to with their business model, to stay open 24 hours so long as they served food. Now, I don't think any of them did. But all I'm making the point is that this location has always had some kind of alcohol use associated with it, with the exception of when it was the breakfast place. In addition to that, with the Vons and then when the Albertsons comes back in, they will, of course, as we all know, grocery stores sell a full range of alcohol, from beer, wine, liquor. The CVS does that as well. Now, that's off sale. But certainly, to the point about if, the sense that I get is if there's alcohol there, automatically that suggests that you could drink and drive, which could hurt a child, heaven forbid, or a family member who's walking. And what I'm trying to suggest is that those don't necessarily always add up to that end result. All of those uses can coexist in this same center. They can coexist because the Albert, the soon-to-be Albertsons, the CVS, they sell alcohol. The restaurants that were in here before we came in, they've sold alcohol. There are, and during that whole time, there was the Dairy Queen, there's the McDonald's, there's the Starbucks. There's other mixtures of uses in here that satisfy a broad range of people who want to have ice cream or maybe get a glass of wine or maybe go and buy everything that they need for the Super Bowl, which would include a case of beer at the Albertsons. You can have all of those uses coexist in one center and not, in my personal opinion, lead to some of the things that were suggested tonight. The final point I want to make is that Summerlin itself has several other taverns within its jurisdictions. Maybe "several" is not the right word, actually. There's probably a handful on my hand that I could count. But I want to just point out a couple of them because of their proximity to some of the other uses that have been raised tonight. Vintner Grill and Distill are right near Faith Lutheran School. If you go up Charleston, you'll have John Cutters and Toros, which is right across the street from a school. And I believe it's West Tech, although I could be mistaken on that. So again, all I'm trying to point out is that you can have these kinds of uses coexist in areas next to churches, schools. You can have restaurants that might not raise to the level of taverns, but they do have alcohol. But you can have all of this in one place and have it not necessarily lead to an anti-family-type atmosphere that was suggested tonight. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm going to close the public comment. And I'm sure we have some discussion as planning commissioners. Who wants to start? Commissioner Cherry?
Through the chair. A few questions for the applicant. Has, with their other locations, have they had any violations on their, with regard to their liquor license that they hold in the other jurisdictions?
No, they haven't had any, either at the local level or even with the Gaming Commission. And if you don't know, you have to be investigated every time you open a new location by the Gaming Commission. They've always been on the consent agenda. Been no areas of concern, no violations.
And that's three other locations?
Four.
Four other locations? And then, and this might be a question for business licensing is, so if they get this special use permit, special use permit approved, and they start having events there that are, say, DJ-based or something that just really takes a turn that's consistent from what's represented, what do you have through business license to limit that effect?
Well, through you, Mr. Chairman. There is a nightclub use, but I'm not sure it's actually permitted use within the Summerlin Development Standards Manual. They'd be limited to their amount of entertainment that they could conduct onsite per week if they exceeded, and Karen can correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's three days or less.
Now, with the, for the record, Karen Duddleston, Deputy Planning Director. And I also represent business licensing. With the tavern, you may have entertainment. They can have it all hours of the day and night. They are limited to 50 square feet of area for the entertainment area. So if they have dancing or large group activities, they would be required to have land use for a nightclub and a nightclub license.
And can I just follow up on that? Because that question was asked also at the neighborhood meeting. And nightclub use, as that is defined, is not allowed in Summerlin. You can't even ask for it.
Thank you. So in the event, if it is approved, the neighbors have a way to go on the record and get either code enforcement or licensing out there to stop that activity?
If it violated the noise restrictions, it would be code enforcement. And yes, we would respond to a complaint. If they had entertainment that was over the 50 square feet of space, then they would be in violation of their business license.
Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification regarding nightclub use, it is a listed use, but it would require a special use permit, which would then be a discretionary review that would come before this body again.
Thank you. Just a concern that if it was approved, that it, they know that it can't go in that direction and turn into such a use. And I appreciate all the testimony with the neighbors coming back and forth. But I just see a location that's had alcohol in the past. I see a great operator. They've been in town sometime with a great reputation where a lot of people in this business don't have a great reputation. If it is approved, is there anything that can be, we could tie to it that's a review period in the future for this application?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, there's an ability for this body to impose a required review on one or both of the special use permits for a prescribed amount of time from the issuance of a business license and before which body being either administrative, the planning commission itself, or even city council. Thank you. That's it for my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I live about a mile and a half to two miles from that location. I have five children. Three of my boys, who are now grown, played baseball on those fields since 1994. My girls, that are now eight and 10, ride their bikes up in that area all the time with me, my wife. We walk there. We've been walking there since 1994. This is a beautiful shopping center. And I just want to say I appreciate all the neighborhood comment, or excuse me, the comments by the individuals that were here tonight. But I really think this is a compatible and good use for the location. You know, my wife and I, we go out to dinner at different places. And it would be nice to, as the one gentleman pointed out a little while ago, to be able to walk to an establishment like this, have a glass of wine or whatever the case may be, a good meal, and walk back. I have, it seems like just because the alcohol's involved, you know, you've got to remember, we've got doors, we've got walls. These things are happening behind the doors. And I don't think it's really going to pollute the children on there. And I'd like to point out for those baseball fields that are nearby, if you're familiar with this area, this thing sits up about 15 feet in air, I think, above the road. I may be off on my estimate there. And then it kind of slopes down to where the entrance is coming into the trails. So there's really no direct access from the ballpark to get to that location. You've got to come in through the driveway and actually come way over into the corner. Now, Grantia, there's a Dairy Queen, there's a Porta Sub, there is a Euro Place, and there's a smoke shop right in those areas as well. Alcohol's been a part of that area for a long time. That restaurant's had about five iterations that I know of. My law firm actually represented one of them about 15 years ago. I can't remember which one it was. Across the street, there was a Black Angus, Stuart Anderson Black Angus, that sold alcohol. It went under and then it became a really neat Korean barbecue restaurant. They sold alcohol. And so I just don't think the fact that we're selling alcohol here should, you know, should prohibit the use of this premises. I'm completely comfortable with it. The concept these gentlemen are proposing, I think, is very, very good, with good food and, you know, and a good atmosphere. I have to agree with the other gentleman, and I'm sorry, I didn't write his name down. But this is a community. People have different tastes. There are adults that are looking for a place like this that they can walk to in their neighborhood. If this was just a, you know, a real cruddy, smoky bar, I might side with you on this. But this appears to be a high-end establishment that I think it's great for this use. This shopping center has always been fairly high-energy. I know there's, my kids and I, we've gone to the music in the park over there by the swimming pool. My kids have been using that swimming pool again since 1994. We're well familiar with the neighborhood. And again, with all due respect, I think this is just a great use for this area. And I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions for you, Ms. Lazovich. One, we recently, and you represented, I believe, the organization Toros. And when they opened, they were limited in the hours of their operation. Is that correct?
Yes, I actually--
And recently, they-- Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, please.
I actually handled that application when we got it approved and then handled the request to remove the condition to restrict the hours. Yes, initially, and if I recall correctly, I volunteered on behalf of the applicant to restrict the hours. Subsequent to that, as they got open, and as you know, there's a John Cutters immediately next door to it, which does not have an hour restriction on it, they found that they would like to be open 24/7. And so I came back before the Commission and asked to remove that restriction so that they could be open 24/7.
But it wasn't originally approved with limited hours?
Yes, that one was, not John Cutters.
Yeah, not John Cutters. Then, speak, talk to me a little bit about the smoking ordinance, how that is going to work? And smoking, is it going to be smoking inside of the facility while they're serving food and alcohol? Does that go against the ordinance that isn't currently imposed?
No, as I understand it, they, obviously, for some period of time, you couldn't have food and smoking in the same place. But that has subsequently been changed, I believe, at the state level, where you can now have food and smoking. We have been very fortright about the fact that all of our locations are 21 and over. Obviously, this would be that location as well. They aren't suggesting that, bless you, they aren't suggesting that they're trying to have a place that is appropriate for people under 21. But yes, they can have food and alcohol and smoking all in one place, and our designation is 21 and over.
I've visited the bar, the one on Las Vegas Boulevard, and I forget the street, but up southern part of the Las Vegas Boulevard. And it's a nice facility, a little dark for me, but that's aesthetics. But food was good and it was, people were nice, it seemed. I would think that that would carry over to this development, even though I used to live in that area and very familiar with it. Vons used to be our supermarket. And we've eaten, you know, at the Porta Subs and the Dairy Queen and the Euro Store and the Starbucks and the whole nine. And it is a very great community-oriented area. But there was alcohol at the Ferraro's and other restaurants over there. there was alcohol at the Ferraro's and other restaurants over there. I agree that the Black Angus, so it is surrounded around mixed-use development, and I would think that, and I would hope that they would respect that and not have overflow coming out into the street and to the cul-de-sac and to the other areas around there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
Ms. Lazovich, I was just thinking about the fact that when you have a restaurant with alcohol, the alcohol has to stay on the premise.
Yes.
And when you have a tavern use, you can walk out the door with a drink in your hand. Is that correct?
What? No, maybe I'll let Karen answer that question.
For the rest of Karen Duddleston. Yes, that is correct. Restaurant with alcohol is for the on-premise consumption of alcohol only. A tavern license, on the license side, is for on or off-premise.
So my point is, you know, I certainly don't want to see one of your patrons walking out of the bar with a nice mimosa to walk down the street to go to the ball field, and even in fact if, I know, I mean, this is the law. I just read it. So one of the conditions that I would put that no alcohol consumption would leave the site. Is that
That's fine.
There'd like be a sign at the door, you know, that kind of thing? Because I can't imagine people walking out of there, like, you know, go to a park and have a couple drinks in their hand, and, you know, it just gives me quivers thinking about it. Right?
Absolutely not. We would accept a condition that would say that.
Like even a sign on the wall or something? Do not leave here with your drink?
That's fine.
Or don't come back.
The only area you could go is in the patio on the outside, but you couldn't leave the premises or the patio area with a drink.
What I'm visualizing is somebody coming in, ordering a beer, pouring it in a paper cup, and walking back to the ball field to watch their kids play ball, because they can. And the only way they can't is if your people make sure it's a stipulation and a condition that no alcohol leaves that property, because I can tell you this, my husband would take that cold beer, pour it in a red cup, and walk right across that street. And so I'm just, it was brought to my attention, I'm shocked that you can do that, but I want to make sure that's a condition if this is so passed.
Okay.
The other thing is, I like to hear when someone like Commissioner Flengus lives in that area because he rides it, he bikes it, he raises his children up there, and to know that this use has had liquor time and time again tells me that they failed at their businesses, but that doesn't mean we should punish someone new coming in. And my idea would be that condition, number one, that they can't leave the premises with alcohol. And number two, we would put a one-year review on the fact that, you know, nothing comes out, there's nothing harmful to the children or accidents or anything, and if there is, we just shut them down, that's all. I mean, you know, people leave their jackhammered and kill a kid, they're going to, this place is going to have their own problems, but I don't think we can sacrifice their business when we've already had it there. If it had never been there before, I'd be going the other way, Jen. But because it's been there before, you will see my support with that condition intact. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Thank you. I also live in that area up there and use the trail and have played in the parks and been to the concerts that are there on Friday evenings. And I also am, I'm not an inviper, and you'll not see me put a nickel in a machine, ever. Never have, never will, never had a drink. I'm just one of those kind of guys. I think some of you are too. But having said that, I know a lot of people who live up in the Sun City area, and they were crushed when Albertson's went out of business. They left, and they wanted to get something back in there. And I was out talking to those people about getting something in there, and it came up that we also need someplace to get a decent breakfast and a hamburger. Now, when I get away from things like planning commission meetings, and I go home, and it's 11 o'clock or 12 o'clock, or it's been 3:00 sometimes in the morning when I leave this place, and I want something to eat, and it's convenient to have something within the neighborhood where I can stop and get something to eat. Doesn't mean I'm stopping to gamble or to get drunk. It's not going to happen in my life, but I do need something to eat when I go home in the evenings. And all those other restaurants that I've patronized, and the ice cream store, and McDonald's, and all that stuff that's over there, I still use it. I get my hair cut at the place you mentioned, the place that's just to the east from where this particular facility has used to have a Mexican restaurant that was pretty good, went out of business because the prices were just out of line. That's why it didn't work it. And, you know, having said that, we've got a bigger issue in front of us tonight, and that is, shall we deny someone the highest and best use of their property? Some of you guys are lawyers. Tell me if it's legal. You know, you really have a tough time turning somebody down and just to say, well, it's unpopular. I don't think that's much of a legal defense. And so I'm confronted more with the highest and best use of the parcel, and it's simply a continuation of what has been out there in the past. And when it was out there in the past, it was where you were raising your children, taking them to the parks, driving, walking. And I don't hear any of you say that, and as a result of those places having liquor before, this happened, and it was horrible. I don't know. I don't see it. I'm sorry. So my support is going to be there for it because of the land use issue. I think we got it. That's the fourth vote.
Thanks, Commissioner Trowbridge. Just a few comments. This is an interesting application in that it's within the Summerlin Land Use District, and we have a few different distance separation requirements than we would have were just in the city of Las Vegas and not in Summerlin Land Use. And I guess that's an issue for the neighbors to take up with Summerlin proper. I guess the one place where I would disagree with most of the commissioners, as I've heard them tonight, is on the issue of compatibility. Clearly, both the gaming and tavern use are permitted, but the place, and I guess it's, this is a subjective thing, but it's this 24/7 use of both the gaming and alcohol that I think is not compatible with the surrounding areas, and for that reason, I don't believe I can support this. And if there are no further questions or comments, I think I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, for item number 57, SUP 62674, move to approve.
Now, there was a condition, and I want to make sure that because
Yeah, for staff, should I put the condition on both of them, or is it just one of the SUPs?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, on the special use permit for the tavern, you can actually put the required reviews on both, but as far as any conditions regarding alcohol, it should be on the SUP for the tavern.
Okay, so then, let me rephrase my motion on item 57, SUP 62674, going to move to approve with the following conditions. Number one, that no alcohol will be taken outside, especially, I don't want to limit this in the red cup, but that's just for the gist, but, you know, no alcohol coming outside that's been served in there, number one. Number two, I think the one commissioner was pretty adamant for a one-year review, and that would be an admin review.
So I don't want to muddy the water any, but will alcohol be permitted outside the establishment but within the gated area, or just none outside?
Yeah, well, in the gated area, of course, I think that would be considered part of the premises, and I think my motion was outside the premises. So Commissioner Moody's correct, I don't want to limit it to that outside, you know, where you can't take it to the outside area. And so I definitely want to make it clear on the record that you should be able to have alcohol in that outside seating area.
So again, the applicant agrees to that condition?
Yes, so we can have alcohol on the patio, but outside of the patio, you cannot leave. Yes, agreed to that. And then on the one-year administrative review, just to make a clarifying point, that there has to actually be a tie to something that the business did rather than something in general that happened in the area for there to be an issue.
I don't know if we can get that formal in terms of the review, but it'll just be a general review, administrative review, and whatever happens at that point in time, and staff can bring that up. And if it needs to go back to council or to you, it will.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I can just formalize the conditions.
Okay.
Number one, no alcohol served within the business shall leave the premises.
Good.
Number two, an administrative required review shall be required within one year from the date of the issuance of business license.
Good. So moved.
Okay. Please vote.
Have the applicants agree with that?
Ms. Lazovich, can you just restate that you agree to the conditions as stated?
Just one second. The concern, I'm sorry, to go back to the issue about the one-year review, they just want objective criteria so they know what they would be held to. That's what they're saying.
The review is the review. It's a similar review that we have on every application that requires an SUP. It's a simple check and see if there's anything that's been happening with the business that's not appropriate.
So it just needs to comply with your code?
Correct. Right. It's just a regular review like we do for every SUP that we have.
Yes, we understand. Yes, we agree.
Okay. Please vote. A motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, on item number 58, will make it easier, SUP 62677, move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 57 and 58 will both be heard before the city council on March 16th, 2016.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your attendance tonight. Okay, we were considering taking a brief break, but we only have, I believe, four items left on the agenda. So we are now to, related items 59 and 60. 59 is SUP 62791. And I guess before I do that, I ask the clerks, would anyone else like a break? Okay, all right. Item 59 is SUP 62791. The applicant owner is Miller Harvey M. Family Trust. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 5,532 square foot car wash, full service or auto detailing use at 6351 West Lake Mead Boulevard in Ward 5, staff recommends approval. Related items 60 is SDR 62792, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 5,532 square foot car wash, full service or auto detailing use in Ward 5, staff recommends approval. Can we please have staff report?
Mr. Chairman, staff notes that the applicant has revised the site plan and reduced the building footprint to approximately 5,000 square feet. Staff finds that this development complies with all setback and landscape requirements and recommends approval with a revision to condition number two of SDR 62792 to reflect the date stamp of February 3rd, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. My name is Bob Gronhour, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the applicant and property owner on this matter. This is a car wash for the special use permit, which was actually approved back in 2005 for the same individual. Obviously, since that approval in 2005 and getting ready to construct or commence construction, you ran into the recession. We're back here today with a similar application. I say similar because it was previously approved for variance to reduce parking for minor auto repair along with a car wash. So if I can get your attention to the overhead, you can see how it lays out. It actually sits out in the middle between a CVS and a Sonic that fronts out onto Lake Mead Boulevard. Your staff is recommending approval, and I can answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you. I'll open these items for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing now, I'll close the public comment. Any discussion on the planning commission? Commissioner Carrer?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make a motion to approve, I think, item 59, SUP 62791.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item 59. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Oh, I guess he's got it. We're going to take them both?
Sorry?
I'll take that. Just want to make sure that we were, he didn't have anything else for 60. You're fine? Great. Judd, item number 60, SDR 62792, I move for approval.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item 60. Please vote.
And is that with amended condition?
Pardon me?
With the amended condition.
Oh, sure. Yes, with amended condition. Thank you very much.
Please vote. Please vote. Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, items 59 and 60 will also be heard by the city council on March 16th, 2016.
Moving right along, item 61 is SDR 62647. The applicant is Carolyn Tobin. The owner is Carden Lindell North LLC. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 10,304 square foot commercial building with a waiver to not orient the building to the corner where such is required at 5550 West Sahara Avenue in Ward 1, staff recommends approval. May we please have staff's presentation?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is currently utilized as a motor vehicle sales dealership for new vehicles. The applicant is seeking to add additional square footage to display and sell vehicles through the construction of this 10,304 square foot building located on the northwest corner of Lindell Road and Sahara Avenue. The proposed building meets all minimum development standards pursuant to Title 1908 and Title 1912. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application, subject to conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. In addition, the Department of Public Works has indicated that the last line of condition number 15 needs to be deleted. Speaking to the waiver, on January 26th of 2016, the applicant provided revised plans demonstrating the proposed building being oriented on the corner of Lindell Road and Sahara Avenue, satisfying this requirement, which eliminates the need for the requested waiver.
Hello, gentlemen.
Hello.
Good evening.
Name and address, please.
Yeah, Travis Mylenberg, 8181 North Via de Negocio, Scottsdale, Arizona.
And Kevin Evernham, same address, 8181 Via de Negocio in Scottsdale, Arizona.
Thank you. Have anything to add to the application or any comments?
No, not really. We met with Councilwoman Lois Tarkanian this afternoon, and we talked through a few issues that have come up in the past, and we've been given assurances that, you know, there has been some test driving that's occurred near our property, but it hasn't been associated with our vehicles. And so we're aware of that, and we were able to satisfy Lois's concerns and
The secondary concern was service bays oriented to being visible from the streets. The proposed development is a showroom-only for Ferrari and Maserati vehicles and has no service bays. They're utilizing what's currently in the existing building, so there's no, nothing visible, nothing proposed in this expansion of their property.
Okay, great. I'll open this for a public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on item 61? Seeing now, I'll close the public comment. Any discussion on the commission? Commissioner Carrer, your light's on. Did you want to be heard? Commissioner Quinn?
I just wanted to thank Tobin Motors, because a few years ago, we went out there, and you had cars like piled up on sidewalks, and, you know, the minute we met with you, you complied, you moved everything, and you can see by the streetscape here that you still have everything up to code. I drove through the parking lot just today, and it just looks beautiful, and I wish you all the best of luck on your next endeavor. With that, I'll be making a motion for approval on SDR 62647, following all staff's recommendations.
And Mr. Chairman, could we include the correction to the public works condition 15?
So the, including the deletion of condition 15?
Yeah.
No, it's the last sentence of condition 15. That doesn't apply to this project.
All right, very good. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. So my motion is for approval.
Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 61 will be heard by the city council on March 16th, 2016.
Thank you. Good night.
Very good. Thank you. The last item on the public hearing portion of our agenda is item 63, VAC 62664. The applicant owner is Cornerstone Company. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a portion of Fourth Street at the intersection of Fourth Street and Colorado Avenue in Ward 3, staff recommends denial. Please have the staff report.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, before we begin, just a disclosure that I met with the rec at one point and gave him a proposal on a particular project and indicated that I wasn't really interested in working on that project, and also asked him to reach out to other generals. So just wanted to put that on the record. I don't have any work going on with Rick. I'm not planning on having work going on with Rick in the near future. Nothing against Rick. I just wanted to put that on the record.
And you're all very nice, but I wouldn't do business with any of you.
For lunch.
All right. Very good. Staff report, please.
And, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to vacate a portion of right-of-way near the northwest corner of Fourth Street and Colorado Avenue. This area was previously approved to be vacated in 2006 and has since expired. Since it expired in 2009, the city has been looking at ways to utilize existing rights-of-way for pocket parks and downtown open space to incorporate in the city's future downtown master plan. master plan. The city standard is to provide approximately 25 acres of park for every 10,000 residents. In the downtown area, this number is only approximately two acres per every 10,000 residents, which is significantly lower than the city standard, and is also low when compared to other downtown areas such as Los Angeles, which has approximately eight acres of park per 10,000 residents. The area being requested for vacation would make an ideal pocket park and can be used to enhance the open space in the downtown area, therefore, staff is recommending denial of this petition of vacation. If approved, the area will not be able to be used as a pocket park or to make other enhancements to downtown Las Vegas public areas.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening. Rick Schusdell, 820 South Rancho Lane, Suite 85.
Justin Michaels, 820 Rancho Lane.
The staff is correct. This was approved originally in 2006, and with all the intentions of building a development there, but as most of you know, by 2007, the whole US economy went a different direction. So, this project was let, basically, let expire, and now that we feel that we've, we're on track to come back and do something, I wanted to come back in, submit the application for the vacation again, so we can spend the dollars to retool the plan. We will come back with a revised site plan, development plan, and, but, I think it's important to understand what we are vacating and what we're actually putting back in here is, the vacation, the way it came out originally, is an area of about 4,900 square feet. That, on these overheads, that would be the area of the orange and the green. But, when you look at the building plan that we had previously submitted with the commitments we made to the city, and we still stand by those commitments as we come back in, the ground for retail that's required of a mixed-use development is this area in purple. We've got over 50 feet plus or minus of right-of-way from the curb at Colorado back to the line of the building, which is all new hardscape that will go in and replace, partial hardscape that's there today with benches and such, landscaping up the side of the buildings, back to the building, and there. I agree, downtown Las Vegas, the whole city of Las Vegas should adopt, and they have adopted, an aggressive park program. We need park space. We need public realm space to create a quality of life in our downtown, and I've always believed that. Some four years ago, I met with Ms. Moody and Flynn Fag, the director of planning at the time, and presented a plan to develop with the city the Palm Tree Park that's south of Colorado, and light it up and create a destination as a transit-oriented zone, so the development they have here would, would have that, that park feel to it. It was, made clear to me at the time that the city didn't have funds, wasn't going to commit funds, and that project was not on anybody's hierarchy of coming forward. So, that property still exists. The city of Las Vegas still will own almost an acre of land across Fourth Street, where right adjacent to the Welcome to Las, Downtown Las Vegas sign, plus other venues that are planned for parks along Third Street farther north, where there's a potential narrowing of the roadway to create a, a park-like atmosphere. And I think that's, that's incredible, and the way to do that is, is have good quality development, people living in the area, so developers can put forth dollars that the city does have to use and, and develop these parks. If you look on the site plan here, we have a small sculpture garden on the side of the building. When we bring this plan back in to you, we, I guarantee you, we will bring that sculpture area back, and that's what it'll be used for, is a sculpture area. I want green space, I want open space, but when you, when you look at where the building is, look at the 4,900 square feet compared to roughly the radius portion of the purple area, you have approximately 2,100 square feet. So, less than half of what we are vacating and agreeing to pay or reimburse the city and the RTC for, we're also going to take almost 2,700 feet and come back in and rebuild the hardscape at that corner, which provides additionally, really no loss in what you have today, because when you look at the areas where there's a, a small concrete area, and the rest is gravel, not really much of a, a downtown realm to, to do anything with, we're going to come back and make all of this hardscape and grass per our landscape plan, which will provide almost as much open space as currently exists. It'd be configured differently. We agreed with the conditions of relocating palm trees, either onsite to match, or deliver those to the, the city for plant, you know, to a city yard where they can relocate them elsewhere. Also, back in 2006, when we went through this process, the, the city had either staff or access to appraisers that would do the appraisal process. In this case, with, I guess that doesn't exist today, but in meeting with staff during our application meetings, we agreed to reimburse the city the cost of the appraisal process as we go forward on this, and reimburse the cost, because this property was originally taken by the city and the RTC. So, I'm, I'm standing before you saying, yes, you're vacating this, I'm, I'm going to truly use less than half of it for building area, and the rest is all going to be re-landscaped and part of a public realm to add to the enhancement of that corner and, and finish it, so as you come toward, north through the palm trees, you will still get that feeling as you come up to this building. So, I, I think we've addressed the concerns of, I hope I've addressed the concerns of a pocket park, and what can be created about, you know, through programmed space, but the only thing that happens there today is, I think Zappos or Free, or one of the organizations has a master agreement to sell liquor on the streets down there in front of any of the property owners, and I, I don't believe this vacation affects that in any way, shape, or form. So, I, I do ask for your support and approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I will open this for public comment, and since I believe you're the last two here, I don't anticipate any, and therefore, close the public comment, and we can discuss this as a planning commission, beginning with Commissioner Carrer.
Through the chair. I will be supporting this application. This is an important piece to downtown. It's kind of a gateway, so to speak, from coming down from the strip to downtown Las Vegas. I think the applicant's right that the, it isn't really a great place for a pocket park. You know, I live a few blocks to the, to the north of this, this property, and there's a lot of discussion about parks coming into the neighborhood that are better fits, linear parks that are hopefully going to be pushed forward, and trails that'll connect up to this linear park, and like it was, I remember when this was approved in the past, when we were doing our projects in the downtown, and so, I'm in support of it. I, I do hope that when a, a building does come forward, that they, they take advantage of that extra area with the architecture they can do and bring a nice project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you know, typically on vacations, I'm, I don't support a lot of vacations, and there was one that come before us near the Las Vegas Academy, and the commission went against me and my ward, and I was kind of a little upset about that one, because, you know, the applicant got up here and they stated that, well, we approved it here, and we approved it here, and we approved it here, and tried making some justification on something in our ward that really didn't fit, because what we effectively did at that planning commission meeting was, we took away our ability to create a pocket park going all the way down that, that corridor. This is a little bit different, and, in the sense of, we're not taking away the ability to create a pocket park all the way down a corridor. If you look at the screen and you look at the actual site map, this is directly on the corner of Third Street and Colorado, and as you head south, you'll see that there's a median that's probably 30 feet wide by a couple blocks long. I think it goes all the way down to the Welcome to Las Vegas sign. This last little section across the street, I don't think is going to necessarily turn into a pocket park. I am a part of a Parks Committee on Creighton Park downtown, and have been pushing to get more of these pocket parks downtown, but I don't think a little 4,900 square-foot pocket park, or some of the other little pocket parks where they're 400 and 500 square feet, is really going to add a whole lot. The, the parks that we're looking at bringing downtown, I think will be more of a trail system that'll be connected to a much larger trail system downtown. I've been having, I had meetings with Jorge and Cervantes, and meetings with Betsy Fretwell, trying to push and get more parks downtown. I just don't feel that this right here is going to take away from our ability to create pocket parks downtown. Another thing is, a lot of times I look at vacations as a developer just trying to, you know, overbuild, or are they trying to take advantage of a, a particular street or public, public land, because typically, you don't have to pay for it. And, and this case, the developer will have to pay for it, and so, and we're building projects for our clients in this whole general area, and this part of the Arts District is really about to start blowing up, so I see the opportunity for that high-rise to come in, and more retail. I know of over 70 residential units that's going to be built within three blocks of this particular location, so anything we can do to help development and not hurt our abilities in the future to create parks, I, I think we should be in support of, so you'll see my support tonight.
One thing I forgot to provide the, the commission, is a brief petition that I had signed by two direct property owners, another property owner that had, has a parcel a half a block away, and the former head of the Arts District, as well as another business and property stakeholder just down Colorado where it runs into Main Street, and I'll do that for the clerk.
Thank you. We'll make that part of the record. Commissioner Carrer, do you have another?
If, if there wasn't any more discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Any other comments? I don't see any.
On item 63, VAC 62664, a motion for approval.
Thank you. The motion is to approve item 63. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 63 will be heard before the City Council on March 16th, 2016.
Okay, we are now to item 65, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Seeing none? Meetings adjourned.